Good evening.
Good evening.
It is now six o'clock. Good evening. It is now six o'clock. I'd like to call the Grand County School Board meeting to order. We do have a call. Ms. Ella Anderson is with us virtually. Our vision: Every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission: We empower every student, every day. Board Hays, please believe us in the pledge.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there changes that need to be made to the agenda?
Um, yes, please. Uh, over the break, I worked on a letter to the General Assembly, um, expressing some opposition to Senate Bill 754, titled "School Calendar Flexibility: A New Alternative." A hard copy of that should be in your folders, and I emailed it to you earlier today. So, I would like to make a motion to add that to the agenda. Do you have any recommendations for where?
I would recommend, uh, Section 3.0, between 3.04 and 3.05, under Communication and Community.
Okay. Alright. So, motion to add the letter to the agenda.
Madam Chair, I also have one additional item to add. Um, we received a contract, uh, late Friday evening, for the recommended, uh, movement of school items over the summer for our schools that are being consolidated. Um, Dr. Kern will present this, and I recommend we put it under Item 7.02 as an action item. We'll share details with you at that time. Again, this is a, a contract for services to move furniture and other items between the schools that are being consolidated.
Let's first approve the change of the dinner. Y'all hear it? The motion of, to have, um, Items 4.1, between the letter from, um, Board Member Hayes, and also the, and the surplus that Dr. Winborn stated that will be added to 7.01. Read the question, ready for the motion? Question? Are ready to say aye?
Yes, second. A second.
Okay. Excuse me, sorry. Second motion by Board Member Russell. Ready for question? I would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Next we have the updates from Superintendent Dr. Winborn. Please share your updates, please.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, district team members, and all of our community members that are here in person, and those that are joining us virtually. I'd like to begin tonight with a few important acknowledgements and expressions of gratitude. First, Happy Assistant Principals Week. Uh, that's right. For those of you that didn't know, April 7th through 11th is time to recognize our amazing school leaders. APs have a very tough job, working behind the scenes to support the vision of their principals and district leadership. They work very long hours, and help make sure that their, their schools run smoothly and efficiently every single day. So, if you see an assistant principal this week, be sure to give him a hug, show him some love, and a pat on the back, because they truly do deserve it. So, thank you, assistant principals who are, who are listening. We, we really do love you and appreciate you. For everyone else, I'd like to give a warm welcome back, especially to all of our dedicated educators, following a well-deserved spring break, um, except for, of course, our early college that already enjoyed their spring break earlier this spring. I hope each of you had an opportunity to relax, recharge, and return energized for the final stretch of our school year. So, we, we have just seven weeks remaining, and that's, uh, just a little over thirty school days, until our students, uh, begin their end-of-the-year assessments. And I'm very, very proud of the progress we've made this school year. I'm confident that our students will demonstrate the growth, uh, through their hard work, and, uh, show very strong, uh, performance on these assessments. Mr. Perry will be talking a little bit about that later on tonight. You'll also receive a series of other departmental updates. These shared work products reflect the collaborative effort of our board's committees. As I've said many times, this continues to work very, very smoothly, um, for each of our strategic priorities. So, among those updates tonight, you'll hear, um, about our academic progress, highlighting continued positive trends in student achievement, attendance, student attendance, and student discipline. In every key metric, we're heading in the right direction. Our core teacher vacancy rates continue to be in the single digits, which is amazing, given where we've been in recent years. And our financial outlook, as Ms. Heinz will report, is, has been greatly improved, uh, compared to recent years with, with the courageous action that our board has taken recently. I'm also pleased to share that our focus on safety remains rock solid. And I wanna, I wanna take this moment to share that next year, we anticipate on expanding our school resource officer count to thirteen officers. And that's an increase of seven since I stepped into this role over a year and a half ago. Now, this would not be possible without the ongoing support of our county commissioners. I believe one is in attendance, maybe others tonight. I want to give you a special, uh, note of appreciation, as well as the municipal boards and the directors and managers who have been supporting this, as well Sheriff Robert Fountain, who's been extremely supportive of our efforts in staffing our school resource officers, Chief Willis of the Creedmore Police Department, Chief Champion of Butner Public Safety, and Chief Pats Ford of Oxford Police Department, who'll be, they'll be joining us next year. I'm very excited about that. Um, their, their commitment to the safety of our schools is deeply appreciated, and I just want to publicly thank you all for that work. Additionally, we're gonna provide updates on our school consolidation efforts, uh, including staff reassignments and facility transitions. And I know this topic is of great interest, especially to many in attendance tonight. Um, and I want to be clear, this process has been and continues to be transparent and fair. Since the board's decision to consolidate our secondary schools, every step has been discussed in open meetings. Each employee is being evaluated and reassigned using the same objective criteria, and any claims of favoritism, targeting, or unprofessional conduct are simply untrue. We've approached this process with integrity, grounded in board policy, legal statute, and a deep respect for all employees' privacy and their professionalism. And I'd like to express my appreciation to the board for your steadfast commitment to a fair and principled approach. I also want to thank our district and school leaders for remaining laser-focused on the strategic actions we've taken together. You know, my, my recent full days to our schools, in which many of you board members have been attending, has really only reinforced my belief in the direction that we're heading. Uh, the passion, the commitment, and the progress I witness each day affirm that we are truly transforming outcomes for our students. Together, we're ensuring that every student, every student, every student, is prepared to thrive and reach their full potential in an ever-changing world. Thank you all, and I look forward to a productive and engaging meeting this evening. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn, for the update, updates this evening. I am Helen Lindsay, School Board Chair, and I represent District Number Two. Uh, during the month of March, I had a chance to visit several schools here. One, I went to Wilton Elementary School, and I had a chance to walk through the building. Very, very rich learning environment, called for affirmations here. Even have on the wall some, um, activities that they also highlighted, Black History Month as well. Went to South Granville National Honor Society induction ceremony, kids doing outstanding work there, and achieving, uh, outstanding progress. I attended a meeting that highlighted the new graduate requirements that will come forth to you tonight from another, uh, central office member as well. I see a letter, newsletter from the CEO of the North Carolina Lottery to announce that last year, they generated $1 billion, and if, and the theme being moving North Carolina forward. And one part of this, they, they, uh, showed extra efforts to trying to enhance pre-K engagement for our kids, and we know that when kids have a strong start here, they also have a strong finish. As you know, school here will be in on May 23rd here, and our kids will be going back home to many times, uh, maybe school, uh, full insecurities here, like a supervision here, and I just encourage members of our community to step forward this summer here. Are you part of a faith, faith group, uh, an organization, sorority or fraternity here? Let's band together here, and make sure our kids are cared for the long hot days of summer, because together, we can achieve more and make Granville County a great place to live and thrive. Any more comments? To my right, please share. Board Member Waters.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katrina Burton-Waters, and I do represent District Four. Um, special evening of goodness to all board members, school personnel, elected officials, and all guests. Welcome. First of all, I had the pleasure of doing something that was my favorite, which was reading to students, and I participated in Read Across America. I did this at Wilton and West Oxford, which I enjoyed both activities and events. Gave me the opportunity to interact with the students and to get a bird's eye view of what's going on. Along with that, please give, let me share my pleasure in announcing the arrival of some new Wildcats at Wilton Elementary. They got six, I say six, new baby chicks that have hatched, and as of now, they have been adopted by the 4-H, and this occurred in the second grade classroom of Ms. Sarah Dickerson, which is one of the classes that I did get to visit and read to. During the reading process, I also went into an EC class at Cradle as well, and I truly enjoyed the small group and one-on-one interactive activities that I was able to partake in. Along with that, I visited a first grade classroom, visited Stella Moore's class at Cradle, which I also read to them, but I interactively participated in rigorous learning activities among the students. Um, I did accompany other board members to the Chamber of Commerce banquet, which gave a recognition of vitality to specific individuals, and, uh, students also received some scholarships, which was excellent. Uh, I also attended Battle of the Books at Butner Stem Middle School, and the, all middle schools participated in it, and I must say that the students exhibited great sportsmanship while doing that, and they were able to show what they had read, remembered, and learned. And we cannot forget committed participation. I attended Finance, Policy, and Operations Committee meetings, and also the one that I'm a chair of, Academic Committee, which is led by Mr. Jamal Perry. Thank you so much. It was quite interesting. I learned a lot in all of those meetings, and hopefully, that will make me a better board member for each of you. I provided tutorial support, giving my community accessibility to students that attend our schools. And yes, it is Assistant Principals Week. Let me share some words with those assistant principals. The work you do helps to carry us through, and your work means a lot to your principals, too. The students look up to you. That's so true. The Granville County Board of Education members want to say Happy Assistant Principal Week to you, you, and you. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Waters. Thanks so very much. Ms. Abrek.
Hi, I'm Amanda Abrek. I represent District Six. This month, I attended the HR Innovation Committee and the Finance Committee, both of which, um, we'll be hearing more about that work later on in the meeting. And then also, I just, also, wanted to give an update. The Granville Ed Foundation, um, is gonna have its Arts in Bloom occur from April 22nd to the 24th. So, if you are able to attend that, um, that's a really great way to help, um, give back to our schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Abrek.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicki Baker, and I represent District Three. Uh, this month, I, as well as, um, Ms. Waters, did Reading Across America, where I went to, uh, several schools and read to the students, uh, one in the third grade and one reading in the fifth grade, and that was a lot of fun. I also attended the South Granville National Honor Society, um, presentation, and, um, just honored with all the students and their very high achievements. The GC Chamber of Commerce banquet honoring those in the community, as well as some of the students, uh, received spotlight awards, and I would like to mention these four students again, because I think it's, it's, um, they also received scholarships, and I think it's something that's very important. So, we had Macy Wilkinson, Austin Livinggood, Serenity Cameron, and Ally Curran. So, kudos for those four students and all that they do, uh, throughout the community. Also, uh, attended the committee meetings, Operations Committee meeting, which I also chair, and then, as well as the Finance and the Academic meetings, very productive meetings, a lot of good updates on each of those. I attended a couple of Dr. Winborn's, um, meetings with teachers and students. Very informative, um, very enlightening to see, um, that the, the students were very happy, um, had a lot of good comments, so I think those are excellent, um, sessions that we, that we're having with Dr. Winborn and the teachers and students. And the last thing is Spark NC, uh, event at South Granville, to watch, uh, some of the students do coding with computers to make, um, robots or, or, not really games, it's just really teaching them how to code with the computer. A lot of good information came out of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. What, Member Russell?
Good evening, everyone. I had the pleasure of also, um, participating in Read Across America and the Battle of the Books, and I went into Tar River, uh, I visited Wilton, Butner Stem Middle, Butner Stem Elementary, uh, Granville Early College High School. Um, I ate lunch with students at Holly. I talked to them, the teachers, the assistant principal, the principal, maintenance staff, cafeteria staff. Um, I think I talked to just about everybody that I ran into, and we visited classes, uh, CTE classes, um, Spanish classes, um, I even talked to the SRO officers and the substitute teachers. So, um, I had an immersive march, um, and I was with Dr. Winborn with the, um, looking at our, our plan, our focused forward plan, our strategic plan, um, and that's why I was talking to all these people. And, um, I attended the Commerce banquet, and I was very proud of the students who received awards, um, and I was very gratified to, to the business members that, um, support our school. Uh, we have some strong community, um, support. Also went to Cradle and, uh, read in that class. I have the honor to serve as the Chair for the Finance Committee. Uh, I attended the Academic Committee, the Human Resources Innovation Committee, and the Policy Committee meeting, and I worked with the Teacher of the Year Committee, and then we're gonna meet on Wednesday. So, I've had a wonderful, busy time in our schools, and congratulations to our assistant principals for, uh, Assistant Principal Week. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt, the technology team has asked that board members try to speak more directly into the microphone. Uh, the folks that are on the streaming are having a difficult time hearing you. Just a little bit closer to your mic.
Thank you. Board Member Hayes, you wanna?
Uh, does Ms. Anderson have anything to share?
Board Member Anderson, you all, when she have a few comments? Board Member Anderson?
Yes, can you all hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Well, I want to say good evening to everyone, and first of all, yeah, the congratulations to the assistant principals, but, yeah, it was a busy month, as some of the co-board members already mentioned, uh, with regards to, um, three committee meetings, uh, let's see, the Finance I attended, the Academic one I attended, and as Chair of the Policy, had those three committee, uh, sessions, uh, this past month. And again, Reading Across America, yes, I did with, uh, at Cradle with the kindergartens, and then at, uh, Wilton, uh, second graders. Uh, attended Battle of the Books, uh, that was a great session as well. Uh, it was just, uh, and of course, the Granville County Chambers banquet, uh, that was a great setting as well. So, um, I think that's all I see here, but, uh, it was great, uh, the sessions that I attended and the schools that I went to as well, and as Dr. Winborn know, I was there with him with, at one of those sessions. And also, I attended the, um, let's see, it was, yeah, at South Granville High School, I think it was VE Showcase as well. So, great sessions. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Board Member Hayes?
Yes, um, so, March really was busy. I hate to go through it day by day, so I'm gonna skip that. I'm just gonna say, um, you know, I, I think I've made it to every strategic planning session, so far, with the exception of Northern Granville Middle School. Um, I've, I've seen some people make some comments that, that we don't seem to have a plan, and so, I remember when we had our community strategic planning session, and I actually remember the vast majority of people that attended were employees. And so, um, you know, I know that we have those, we invite the community in on those, uh, strategic planning sessions, uh, once every, I think we redo them every two years, and I would just like to, just preemptively invite everyone. Um, I hope to see this amount of participation at every single meeting going forward. Um, I'm so excited to see everybody that cares so much about education in Granville County, and I would, I would really like for people to have this much input when we, you know, open it up for the community to talk about what our priorities are in Granville County. Um, so, the strategic planning sessions that, that I have been to and talked to staff were Wilton, Tar River, Granville Central, Early College, Holly, and Mount Energy, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the rest of them. Um, a few of the other things that I attended were, um, the VE Showcase with Ms. Winborn and Ms. Lippard. Um, they're doing a great job with our students, and I think they were off to Florida, maybe, for a competition. Um, Spark NC, um, our students in the Spark Lab at South Granville, I saw some presentations from some really amazing students. Mr. Delaney is doing a great job with that. I also made it over to Tar River for mineral presentations, uh, from Ms. Floyd's fourth grade class and her team, and a couple of committees, including Academic Policy and, what was the other one? Um, Operations, of course. We didn't have a legislative committee, but I do have a legislative update. Um, on March 11th, I spent the majority of the day in Raleigh. I met with a couple of different legislators, including, uh, Representative Sheetzelt and also Gable. We had some good conversations about, uh, House Bill 192. As you guys know, our letter that we adopted back in December had a really large impact and played a huge part in that bill. Um, as of right now, the update is, is that it's been referred to the House Committee on Appropriations, and so, I want to encourage board members, as well as the community, to please send emails to the members of the House Appropriations Committee, because if we're gonna fight for, um, raises for our staff, raises for our teachers, reinstatement of master's pay across the state, um, that's only gonna happen if we, if we all come together and work towards that and advocate for our, um, our educators. And then also, um, the letter that, uh, that I brought and added to the agenda, um, which we will talk about later. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Grand County Policy Revisions, Policy Committee, First Read. Any question about the First Read? Board members, any questions, comments? If not, I need a motion to, um, approve the First Read on, on those policy revisions.
Motion to approve policy revisions.
A second.
Okay. If a motion by Board Member Hayes, second by Ms. Russell, or if a question, I would say aye?
Aye.
Close the same right. Ayes have it. Let's go down now to 3.05, Student Staff and School Highlights. Is that Ms. Curran? Dr. Curran?
Yes, so, um, we have our highlight reel. As you all have stated, there were many, many events that happened in March, and we had some pretty awesome celebrations, so, um, I believe, Mr. Connor will, will roll it for us.
Thank you, Dr. Curran, for that preview of our highlights for Granville County. Next is our Public Comments section here, 3.06. We had nine people to sign up for public comments here. Need a motion to extend the time to allow people to share their concerns.
Yes, um, I would like to make a motion to extend the time allowed for a public comment in order to accommodate all nine people to have, um, time to speak.
A second.
The motion made by Board Member Hayes, come by Ms. Russell, extend the time to give everyone a chance to agree their concerns. Ready for questions? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Turning.
Thank you. We will now move to public comment, the public comment portion of our evening. Uh, according to Board, according to Board Policy 2310, during public comment period, the Board Chair will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted. Speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the time limit, the speaker may provide the board with additional information in written form. If you have your comments in writing and you do not have time to, uh, share them, you can hand the written form to, uh, to Ms. Curran here at the, at the corner. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential, therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Concerns related to personnel issues may be addressed through GCPS personnel, grievance policy, or other applicable policies. Profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any individual will not be permitted. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in according, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-318-17. The Board vests in its Chair or other presiding officer the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual when they do not adhere to these rules. And Madam Chair, we'll be proceeding with the usual five-minute limit? First speaker?
Five minutes. It's five minutes.
Okay. All right. I will run a timer, and I will signal you by raising my hand that you have one minute left. Our first speaker is Daryl Moss. Our first speaker is Darrell Moss.
Chairman Lindsay, can y'all hear me okay? Okay, just trying to make sure I get to the mic myself tonight. So Chairman Lindsay, Stan, Courtney, School Board members, it is always my pleasure to be here with you. I am hoping that I don't break any of your rules tonight. I will tell you that I am very emotional about what is going on with Jake Wolfel, so I'm gonna do my best to hold it together and not, not make you crazy either. But tonight, I am here to support Coach Jake Wolfel. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about that. I heard Stan's remarks about your process, what you've done. There are many people here tonight that think you're wrong. And to that end, I wanna ask his basketball team players, current players, former players that are here tonight, I'd like to ask them to stand. The reason I did that is because I wanted you to see face to face the young people that you're impacting. You may not be thinking about it, but these are, these young men and I actually have something very much in common. I didn't play for Jake Wolfel, but I did play for Coach Jimmy Fleming on that same floor at South Granville. And like these young men, I have left blood, skin, and sweat on that floor. The lessons that I learned on that floor, the lessons of teamwork, playing the game the right way, those are things that I tried to bring during my time as Mayor of Creedmore. And I hope that y'all will think about that. I know we can't talk about personnel issues tonight, I get that, but Jake Wolfel has been done wrong. He has been, and you know it. And I'm asking respectfully that you will reconsider, Stan, Courtney, what y'all have done to this young man, to his family, to this community. You're about to destroy a culture and an environment at a school that it doesn't have to be that way. And I'm sorry if it sounds like that I'm upset, but I am. Danielle, I'm upset. You're my School Board member, you apparently took exception with me not calling you directly. You can do that. I've had that happen to me too. I will say this, I am happy that whoever made the motion to extend the public comment period, that was very wise, because people need to be given an opportunity to speak. I do wish you had chosen to use a larger venue, that would have been the next best thing that you could have done tonight, because I think you'll see, you've got an overflow crowd. These people care about Jake Wolfel, his family, and his players. This community is being negatively impacted by what you're doing. How am I doing on time, ma'am? I don't wanna go over.
You have one minute and 50 seconds.
Thank you very much. I could go on and on, but I won't, because I know we've got a lot, you've got nine speakers that you wanna hear from. But these young men, this program that Jake has built deserves the opportunity to continue. We know that there are issues with the rubric. I know I probably just stepped over the line a little bit, but those things need to be looked at. You all are educators. You can do math. I can do math, and I'm not a teacher, but I can do math. And if there are errors that were made, they need to be corrected. I do hope that you will pay, play close attention to what other speakers say tonight, because I can assure you, they're gonna be here to support Jake Wolfel. And I'm gonna say this, and I'll sit down. Do your job.
Our next speaker will be Guy Curran.
Thank you. My name is Guy Curran. Did I hear you right to say we had five minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I come from a large family here in Granville County. I spent my whole life here in this county, 60 years dealing with the education of people in, just within my family, between me, my brothers and sisters, my children, all of our children, all of our grandchildren, we've sent almost 50 people so far through Granville County Public Schools in my lifetime. I have seven grandchildren right now in Granville County Public Schools. I have to say, this is the most disgusting thing I have ever seen happen, is what has happened to Jake Wolfel. In all of my 60 years dealing with this, I have a vested interest in this county, and what y'all are doing to Jake Wolfel is just, just disgusting. Two of our leaders in the county, I know, I know Mr. Winborn and Ms. Curran, both of you have intentionally, I believe intentionally lied about Jake's rubric score. And to stand here, Mr. Winborn, and say that this has been a fair process, I mean, that's just laughable to this group right here.
On order, please.
So, am I not allowed then to talk about the rubric?
So, personal abuse against any individual will not be permitted as part of what we ran.
Well, you took out a bunch of my speech and what I had to say. Because I think it's a very unfair process, the way you did it. And for you to say that this has been transparent and fair, it has not been for Jake Wolfel. You honestly ought to be ashamed of yourselves for allowing it to happen the way that it happened. And for this to even be able to go through the appeals process is just ridiculous. This should have been something that should have been stopped immediately when it was discovered how unfair this rubric was done. Regardless of what y'all think about him, you can see that there's a lot of people here and a lot more people that have already made public comment on him in other media that have a whole lot of different opinion about Jake Wolfel. And School Board, I just ask you to step in and try to fix this. It is just ridiculous what has happened here, and it should not be allowed by our county leaders to allow something like this to happen. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Lee Roberts.
I'm a parent of a 2024 honor graduate of South Granville High School. He played basketball for Coach Jake Wolfel. He will be attending the University of Mount Olive on two of many offered academic and athletic scholarships. I'm a product of a county school, not Granville County, but Jackson County, Georgia, and in the 1980s, it was very much like Granville County. I've experienced firsthand the pride of community that school and sports events bring. I'm also no stranger to good old boy politics, or should I say, good old girl, that are still alive and well in the heart of Granville County. The last time I spoke in front of this Board, it was to plead with you not to make rash decisions regarding school mergers and closings, and I likened us to Wake County and called it the Great Fiasco. The Board listened to the community, their concerns, and they reversed their decision, and yet, here we are again. Another issue with arbitrary, if not all-out illegitimate reasoning to target a teacher, a coach, a citizen of this community, a son, a husband, a father, a friend, a man who's invested countless hours and resources in our children, and into a program that you are blatantly and unashamedly throwing in the garbage. My first question is, have you lost your collective minds? My second question would be, in whose best interest are you trying to serve? To that question, I've got a couple of answers that we can rule out. It's definitely not the students of Granville County and the student athletes. You'd be hard-pressed to make anybody in this room, this county, I'd go so far as to say this conference and this state believe that it's in the best interest of Granville County student athletes. The men's varsity basketball program hasn't seen the success of this magnitude in any of these kids' lifetime. This is a source of pride for our school and our community, and one that's been celebrated for the last decade. We can easily rule out that it's not in the best interest of our school. I mean, how would it be in the school's best interest to target an individual who's given above and beyond? How could it possibly be in the school's best interest to chase off the 2025 Teacher Don't think the people of this county are dumb enough to believe that this is about a coaching position to be fair and equitable. If this were the case, and it was merit-based, Coach Jake Wolfel would be interviewed and he would retain his coaching position 10 times over. This is about targeting, it's about harassment, it's about bragging about getting a job taken away from somebody, it's about intimidation, it's about persecution of a teacher, of a man, not a coach. I'm speaking on behalf of my family and the majority of the people in South Granville when I ask my final question. Who's your ringleader? What has this man done to deserve the loathing and targeting that you've shown to him at the expense of our students, our school athletic program, to which you have been elected to protect? Who's calling your shots, and why are you following them? Why are you embarrassing yourself and our community? Granville County demands to know, and with that, I yield.
Our next speaker will be Seren Glanton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to start by introducing myself. My name is Sierra Glanton. I am, I'm sorry, this is a little emotional. I am, I'm the mother of Kionny Terry, also known as KJ. We have relocated, relocated to Cretemore a couple of years ago, and since then, I've seen a drastic change in my son. I have never had an out-of-control son, but the love of basketball has just grown more and more. Not that he hasn't already loved basketball, but to him, it felt more like home with Coach Wolfel. My son will also express to me how he will go to Coach and speak with him briefly on challenges he's facing, whether it's schoolwork, with friends, basketball, sometimes maybe even personal things. He'll always tell me, "Ma, Coach Dubb know exactly what to say and how to say it." My son will also speak on how Coach Dubb will push them to their full potential to practice, and also in PE, because he knows their worth, and he knows what they're capable of doing. Now, we've seen the temptation to react with swift action to fire Coach Dubb, but I stand here before you today to argue against the impulsive decision and to advocate for patience, stability, and the long-term health of our team. Firing Coach is a drastic measure far-reaching the consequences. It's not just about the change in leadership, it's about disrupting the team's rhythm, the morale, and the very foundation upon which the team has succeeded thus far. Now, if we think about the time it takes a coach to implement their strategies, to build relationship with players, and to foster a winner culture, a new culture at hand, even if it's a talent one, there has to be time for the strengths and the weaknesses of the players within themselves to even develop a culture. With everything at hand, these kids are left feeling hopeless and betrayed, and more vulnerable now than ever. Also to mention scared, Coach has been a father figure to some who doesn't have one, and also a push-start to their mission. Within the last year, my son lost his father, and Coach Dubb has been that perfect role model for him. He has been the pillar of the community. I mean, what Coach actually gives back to the community and have their team participate in the community? If the decision is to, if the decision is upheld to let Coach Dubb go in the upcoming weeks, I can guarantee you all will see the fall of the basketball team, as Granville Central did last year. The boys actually dream, eat, sleep basketball, and to get all that taken away from them by taking Coach Dubb is like a punch in the gut. However, to reiterate and speak on what Stan Winborn had mentioned about fairness and equal opportunity, which we know now is not the case, it's a motive to bring down the best coach that ever stepped foot in Granville County. Over 14 years, I have graduated, I graduated from Webb in 2005, and I have never, oh, and I have never, ever seen a coach that cares more for their team other than Coach Dubb. We love your family. We will fight for you, and I am here because I am just so emotionally attached to Coach Dubb and his family because of everything they have done, and the efforts he put into these kids, and I will stand by him. And with everything that's going on, if Coach Dubb is not the coach of next year, we will be leaving as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Michael Mohammed.
Good evening. What we are seeing today is just a continuation of the unfair hiring practices that we have been witnessing within this administration for quite some time. A younger lady filed a complaint against the school administration for the professional behavior of the human resources, Dr. Curran and Dr. Winborn, and has been described by many people as being cold, impersonal, retaliatory, and vengeful. Now, this is not a complaint from just one person. As the NAACP representative, I've received many complaints, large from diverse people of various walks of life, from students to parents, to principals, to teachers, and coaches, and custodians, to bus drivers. All have expressed serious concerns about the Superintendent and HR representatives' behavior.
Referring from names, please.
I'm sorry?
Referring from names of--
Okay, I said the HR and the Superintendent, their behavior. We're talking about their behavior, unapproachable, their behavior. I use titles. HR, Superintendent. Are you with me? Thank you. You are not a community-oriented Board or administration right now. There's community, you're not community-friendly, and that's plainly seen. Dr. Winborn goes on to say that they have established a structured interview. I'm repeating the email from Dr. Winborn.
Please not use names, please, sir.
The Superintendent goes on to say that they have established a structured interview process with clear rubrics to evaluate all qualified candidates, that a school-based committee would conduct interviews. Can rubrics be established in a way to purposely eliminate a candidate? I asked that question. So this Board must take a closer look now at the marching orders that have been given from this administration, from this, about a policy to effectuate this particular, these rubrics, a school-based committee that would be, conduct interviews. Who will select this committee? How would this committee be selected? Who would do all this? We have to pay close attention to this. To acquire an employee to reapply for their job during restructuring and streamlining operations, that's business practice, cutting away cars-- Cutting away costs may require employees to real-apply for their positions, but the actions has to be fair, it has to be equitable, and it has to be transparent. And these are the areas that this school administrations are lacking. Thank you very much. One last thing before I close. Dr. Lindsay, you have failed.
Name called, please.
You have failed. You have failed to investigate this administration. The board specifically, the policy specifically says that the chair should direct this board attorney to investigate this administration if they are involved in a claim of discrimination or unfair hiring practices. That's exactly what your policy says. You failed, Dr. Lindsay. Not this board, you, the chair. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mark Adcock.
Good evening. I appreciate y'all letting me speak. There's something I want to say tonight that we all need to think about in this room, and that's character, humility, and selflessness. I've known Jake Wolfau for a period of years. I haven't been able to attend ballgames the last couple of years because my dad's under hospice care and I'm kind of tied down to him. But Jake will always, on Sunday mornings, fill me in on everything that goes on. And not one time has he ever took credit for anything. It's always my players, my students. Selflessness, humility, something that's biblically important to me. A man with character. And I would think that Granville County schools would want that, regardless of what political persuasion you are, what side of the fence you stand on. That's something we all have in common. It was not unusual after Sunday School on Sunday mornings to walk into the sanctuary of Pleasant Grove Baptist Church and see South Granville High School basketball players sitting in our sanctuary, which was a thrill to our church congregation. A thrill. And Jake's sitting right with them. Jake Wolfau is a man of character. I would think that that's something we need in Granville County schools. But let me express something else. There's a scripture in the Bible that comes to my mind. Peacemakers, peacemakers will inherit the kingdom of God. And I'm going to give you an instance. There was a basketball game some years back. I think it was maybe Bobby Pettiford senior season at South Granville High School where an incident took place. One of the students came around and had a sign, beat this Vikings, beat whatever. A bumping episode took place. Fans from Ridgeville came out of the bleachers, fans from South Granville came out of the bleachers. And the first thought that entered my mind was this is going to be ugly. And thank goodness, I myself went down on the court to try to be a peacemaker. South Granville, the Granville County Sheriff's Department did an awesome job. But one thing stood out to me during that event. Jake Wolfau was right in the middle of the main part of the melee where it was beginning to become a violent event. And giving everything he had in his being to quell everybody that was around, coaches, fans. I mean, giving everything he had to do what our Lord and Savior stresses for us to do, and that's be a peacemaker. And it was on him, and it was Jake Wolfau, that stepped into that situation and quelled that situation to the point to where everything was calm and a violent episode was avoided. That was his mindset. Jake has never been about himself, has never took credit for anything. It's always his students, his players, everybody else around him. I would think in the days that we live now, in our time, that something of that nature in a human being would be grasped by the communities. That's something you don't want to lose.
One minute.
People, please consider this. It's about character. It's about heart. And what do our students need along with a good education? Character, heart, humility, and caring about others. Care what side of the aisle you stand on. We all have that in common in our mindsets. Please consider the character of this man. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be KJ Terry.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Keoni Terry, also known as KJ Terry. A member of the South Granville basketball team. I stand before you to talk about someone who has made a tremendous impact on not just my life, but the lives of every player on our team, Coach Jake Wolfau. He's been there when we face personal challenges, offering support, advice, and encouragement. For many of us, he's been a father figure, a role model, and someone we can always count on. He saw potential in every player, even when we didn't see it in ourselves. And he pushed us to be the best versions of ourselves on and off the court. We maintain a 3.4 GPS team this year because of the leadership of Coach W. He taught us the value of community service by giving our time to volunteer throughout the community. We are more than just athletes to him. We are family. Coach Wolfau created an environment where we supported one another, where we encouraged to our best effort. No matter the situation, thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker will be Joel Wolfau.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jake Wolfau's dad. I want to try to get something straight. You all are closing schools. You're losing kids and families by the boatload. You're eliminating a cultural icon's name from our schools. You are and should be embarrassed and humiliated by this spectacle. You're railroading one of the most talented, successful staff over 14 years. You have made a mockery of Granville County throughout the state. And you are still listening to Stan Winborn. On what planet, with a common sense, with an iota of common sense, at this time, do you listen to Stan Winborn? You have offended, if not outraged, by my count, 90 to 95% of the community. You, the school board, and members of the district staff are the outliers. What's the fix? This is the fix. First, and if you have to do this in closed session, you have the power to do so. Don't let Winborn, Kern, or their lawyer tell you otherwise. You have the power to do what I'm about to tell you to do. First and foremost, you take Winborn, Kern, and their lawyer to the woodshed and figuratively, you put them over your knee and you spank the daylights out of them. The only kids who Winborn, Kern, and their lawyer have in mind, that they care about, are them. They are total juveniles.
Sir, please.
Second, Dr. Lindsay, that is not a personal attack. That is me calling out them for the way they've administrated this process.
It's a personal attack, sir. Please, please refer.
I think a lot of people in the community would disagree with you. Second, you command Stan Winborn tonight to communicate to Jake Wolfau that he is and will be a PE teacher at South Granville. Period, end of story. Three, you hire me as an unpaid consultant, not as a lawyer, but as a consultant to manage the people at the district office who've proven they're incapable of managing themselves. And I will honestly, with an emphasis upon honestly, will report to you as members of the school board. You will not be misled with me in that capacity. The community, I don't know everybody here, but those who don't know me know people who do know me. And if I give you my word, you can take it to the bank. Thank you very much.
Point of clarification, please. Point of clarification, please.
Point of clarification, please. Yes. So I actually have a question. So we've lost hundreds of students since COVID, when the schools were shut down. And so, and not having staff members, I mean, not having students has what has led to a reduction in funding for staff. And so, I mean, I'm just curious. How do you feel about that since you kept strip clubs open when schools were closed?
Our next speaker will be Scotty Brooks. Our next speaker will be Scotty Brooks. Is Scotty Brooks present? Is Scotty Brooks present? Okay, that concludes all the sign-ups. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Move forward. Consent agenda, please. Items 4.101, second read. 4.1 through 4.8 consent items.
I would like to move that we approve all consent items as listed.
Second.
A motion by Board Member LeBret, second by Board Miss Hayes. Ready for questions? All states are aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right. Ayes have it. Out of order, ma'am. Ma'am, be out of order, please. Out of order, please, ma'am. Out of order, please, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, the... We need to go back to Mrs. Hayes's letter.
Did everybody have a chance to read it?
Read the letter.
We don't have it electronically to display. I apologize. Yeah. It was not added to the agenda because it was a late addition. But everyone, each board member has a copy in their folder.
Okay. So first, does anybody have any questions or thoughts about the content? Or disagree with any of the statements?
I don't have a comment. Thank you for doing the letter. But I do have a question. When these letters, when you take it upon yourself, and thankfully, you're doing a great job, do you and the board chair communicate on what's being put in and whether or not you're going to do it? Is there a protocol process for that?
So sometimes I just go off of what we've talked about. So previously, there had been an email update about this bill. And I think that was it to the whole board.
Oh, no, I saw that.
Right. And so I was just like, I took that opportunity to just build off of that email. There's no protocol. I mean, anybody is welcome, as board members, anybody is welcome to do that at any point in time and then bring it to the board.
Okay, so, all right.
I'm not aware of any policy.
I was wondering if you made it a habit to go to the board chair before doing anything like that. But just asking for my benefit. Thank you.
No.
Any more questions about the letter that Board Member Hayes developed?
Ms. Anderson, does she have any input?
Ms. Anderson, are you still there?
I'm not sure.
I did read it, and I don't have any questions with regards to it.
Okay. As I...
Thank you.
As I said earlier, this will be going to the Senate Education Committee on Wednesday, I believe, if I was reading their calendar correctly. And so, the rush was to get it into the hands of the senators that are on that committee before they meet in order to get the opposition in front of them. So. Okay.
Need a motion on the letter? You go forward to the Senate?
Motion to proceed with the letter as presented.
Second. There's been a motion by LeBret and second by Mrs. Baker. Ready for questions? I think it's a aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, have the same right. Ayes, aye.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank the board for their consideration about this issue. It's very important that we retain as much local control as possible in designing our school calendar. I think that we all agree to that. And hopefully, this will be taken into consideration by our legislators. So thank you for adopting this and sending it off. We'll make sure it's delivered.
I think it's well. Now we have 5.0 academic updates. Mr. Pear and his team, please, come forward and share your information.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I want to share our April academic updates, and I have invited a couple of people to join me. We'll start off with the topics that are listed on page number three. You can fast-forward, Mr. Connor. We will discuss a little bit about our Governor's School representative this year. We talked a little bit about our citizenship endorsement at the academic committee meeting that was held right before spring break. So I wanted to share you additional information for the full board, as well as the summer learning opportunities for students for 2025. We'll also share information about our middle-of-the-year data sets, particularly from our K-2 literacy and information for grades K through 8, our reading and mathematics through our universal screener, iReady. And you'll hear from the AI Task Force, which is being led by Mr. Ernie Connor, excuse me. As always, we'll share attendance and behavior information as well for the previous month. So I'll give way to Mrs. Becky Bishop, who will share about the process of Governor's School selection. What is Governor's Schools, Governor's School, and how our representative was selected this year. Becky.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Winborn, executive team. This is always one of my favorite times to come and share with you to talk about Governor's School. To give you a little bit of history on Governor's School, our Governor's School in North Carolina is actually the state, the oldest statewide summer residential program for gifted and talented high schools in our nation. The opportunity is to provide gifted students of our state with an experience that will broaden their educational horizons by presenting them with cutting-edge ideas and theories. Each summer, selected students are invited to Governor's School to help build a learning community during a four-week residential session. Students are encouraged to explore, ask questions, and with the purpose of learning for its own sake and discovering new possibilities that complement their... own sake and discovering new possibilities that complement their already, already their high school instruction that they are receiving. Throughout this session, students learn without the pressures of testing and scores and grades and grade point averages. And so, the Governor's School emphasizes collaboration efforts in all discipline areas. To attend Governor's School, students go through a very rigorous local and state application and nomination process. Students are selected locally at the district level to be sent on to the state level, where they then compete at the statewide level. If, if they are selected, then they do get to attend one of the wonderful Governor's School opportunities in the summer. And this year, we had five students who submitted applications for our district, and all five of those students were nominated to move on to the state level. And this year, DPI had, was the largest...
Excuse me, excuse me. I need them to quiet the lobby, please. Quiet the lobby, please. Thank you so very much. I'm sorry.
That's okay. This year, the Department of Public Instruction actually had the largest amount of applications that they have had in history. So, they reviewed 1,850 student applications that were applied for all across our state for approximately 800 slots for students. And so, out of our nominees, we did have one selection. And so, tonight, we would like to congratulate and highlight Lauren Davis from our Early College. She will be attending the Governor's School West at Greensboro College, and her discipline will be social science. So, congratulations to Lauren. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Bishop, I want to thank you for your leadership in helping guide this process. I know it was very difficult to select from the pool of so many talented individuals we had that applied. And we are very, very proud of her for being selected. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to, to talk to you about the citizenship endorsement. North Carolina now offers the opportunity for students to earn seven different diploma endorsements. This past fall, Ms. Rice presented to you about the new arts endorsement. And tonight, I present the new citizenship endorsement. Students must take a verbal test and answer correctly six out of 10 questions from the United States Citizen and Naturalization Test. We will be administering these tests in the month of April at each of our high schools and giving students the opportunity to earn this endorsement. Are there any questions? Thank you.
I'm sorry. How, how many endorsements do we currently offer here?
All seven.
All seven?
We do offer all seven.
On average, how many endorsements would you say our average graduate gets? I know they routinely get more than one.
Yes. I would need to look it up to, to be certain. And I can, I can get that information for you.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salisbury.
Good evening. I am so excited because I am here to talk to you about our summer learning opportunities. And this is what we're offering. So, we're going to continue with our reading camp. And as, you know, most of you know, that this is a state legislated camp that we are required to provide for students who have not, or who need some additional support in reading instruction. We, this is funded by the state, and we use students' M-class assessment to identify those students who need to attend the camp. We're also going to provide summer school, and this is going to be for grades four through eight, and high school juniors and seniors who need course or credit recovery. Principals are working to get students registered who need the additional support and instruction during the summer. We are also excited that this year, we will be providing also an AIG camp. And if you take a look at the screen, these are our summer programs with the basic logistical information for each. We will have a site on each end of the district. We will have a northern end and a southern end, which will be Cradle and Mount Energy Elementary Schools. For students, the summer programs are going to run from June 3rd through June 26th, and the school day will be from 8 to 2. Okay, next slide, please. Can, can you go back once? Thank you. So, again, we're offering our AIG program, and that's to students in second through seventh grade. And we're excited because we are also providing an AI Student Task Force, where students will be able to come in and learn more about AI. And we'll also offer, again, this summer, our Summer Intern Program. We are in the process of developing a program for our English Language Learner students. We've looked at our data, and we've seen that those students also need some additional support during the summer. We found funding to do that, and they're pretty much going to follow the same pattern, the same days, the same site locations, and so forth. Are there any questions?
Dr. Whitaker, I'm not sure if you know off the top of your head, approximately, how many students will we be able to serve total for all of these programs, ballpark?
So, right now, we're still in the process of applying. So, the application window for our summer school program doesn't close until Friday. We've closed our Read to Achieve window, and right now, we have 269 students who've registered for that program. So, we really won't know, Becky's doing AIG, so we won't know that until those windows close.
I do want to add for the, if you go back a slide, one more. Well, the summer school enrollment, that ends on the 11th as well. We do have up to 300 slots available, and that's been divvied out according to the enrollment per the school. So, the elementary schools have a certain number of slots they can use for the summer, as well as middle school. And we work with our high school because it's kind of early to tell right now, based on what's, what courses students need. Any additional questions about our summer learning programs?
I had a question about the summer interns.
Yes. That's a popular program. We actually started that last year, and I'll bring Ms. Salisbury up to share more information. That's going to be competitive this year, I will say, because there are lots of students who are very interested in participating in our summer internships.
So, summer internships are rising, 11th and 12th grade students. And this summer, we hope, hope to offer 30 internships. Students will be working within Granville County public schools, in our maintenance, in our bus garage, in our technology department, in our reading programs with the summer schools. And we also will be working with Granville County Government, the City of Oxford, Smart Start, Families Living Violet's Free, and other local nonprofits will be partnering with us for students to have those jobs. They will work up to 30 hours a week for four weeks, and then receive a stipend at the end of the summer. They'll also earn the OSHA 10 certification. Yeah. So, we're very excited for this program.
Salisbury. So, our next section is our middle-of-the-year data. And I just want to just kind of piggyback off something Dr. Winborn mentioned in his opening remarks about where we are as a district academic and about making improvements. And we're not there where we want to be just yet. And we know that it's going to take, you know, some time for recovery and getting students where we really want them to be and where we need them to be. So, we are making gains. So, we are seeing some strong growth in some areas. There's some others, other areas where we still need, we're seeking improvement. But the teachers, our administrators, our academic coaches, our administrative team, they've been working diligently to work with schools, to work with teachers, to work with students, to make sure that students and schools are growing this academic year. We, we made some good gains last year. We want to make even some better gains this year. But it's going to continue to, making sure that we go back and remember what our goal is, about making sure that all of our schools meet or exceed their growth for the year. So, it's going to take some hard work. And I want to thank everyone who's taken part in making sure that our students have been successful this year. So, I'll go ahead and kick off with our M-class data. We shared this just a little bit in our academic committee meeting. Remember, the M-class assessment is a K-2, K-3 literacy assessment that measures students' literacy skills. That is provided by the state. We also provide services for our, some, some of our fourth and fifth grade students who, who need an additional layer of support, our tier-three students. If you look from beginning of the year to middle of the year, you'll see the percentage of students who are at or above grade level comparatively. I will say that you will see some increases and some decreases. That middle-of-the-year assessment happened during that inclement weather period where we were back and forth in and out of school. That's no excuse, but we continue to work hard to make sure that we are closing gaps for those students. So, we're going to continue to work hard to make sure that our students are gaining the literacy skills that they need. April 9th kicks off the end-of-the-year assessment period. So, that's that last period for that M-class, for that double assessment. We're, we'll continue to monitor, see where those gaps are, to make sure that those students are learning to read at the beginning of the year. So, when they're in upper grades, they're reading to learn. So, the fourth and fifth grade, as you see noted, that is not required. That is a local decision that we do here because we want to continue to monitor those students to make sure that those tier-three students are receiving the support that they need. All right, our next slide. Let's kind of cut off just a little bit. Are you able to scroll down a little bit, so you can see the, the table? There we go. So, this chart here kind of shows you our middle-of-the-year iReady information in mathematics, mathematics. If you notice, what you want to see is you want to see the closing of the gaps in the red areas and the yellow areas. The green represents students who are early on grade level and those students who are middle and above grade level. So, we continue to notice that you see in kindergarten, in the beginning of the year, you don't see any red because that's the kindergarten level. That is the first measure. So, we want to continue, if you notice, the kindergarten, we continue to see that yellow shrink, and the green is growing. So, we want to continue to monitor those students as they progress. And just a couple of slides over, I'll show you where those students are made gains from one year to the next. So, that's mathematics. All right, next slide, please. So, this is grades six through eight. We'll continue to work with those students. We monitor the iReady assessments. Their teachers are using that during tutorials. They're using this information to help group students based on skills, provide intervention, remediation interventions. Next, we'll go to reading. Well, we're still on mathematics here. That's, this is the comparison from one year to the next. So, the first column shows the 23, 24 column of where our students were. The second column shows our current year, 24, 25. If you take a look at the areas in, in blue, and then it looks like it may be black, but it's actually teal, that's where you see their strongest increases. The dark teal is showing where our students, students are compared from the previous year to this current year. Remember, these are not the same students. These are apples to oranges, and not apples to apples.
Mr. Perry, can I interrupt you right there on that graph?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, prior and then current, you're, you are comparing two separate groups of children.
Two separate groups of students, yes.
Right. However, compared to the previous year, if you see the dark teal, or what looks sort of like black to us, and the blue, that would indicate...
Where students are growing from the one year to the next.
An increase...
Increase, yes.
In the percentage of students who are at or above grade level.
Yes.
Okay. So, that would indicate a favorable outlook.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you. So, move to reading. So, here's the same, same information for our reading subjects, reading subjects. And you'll notice there, there's no red in kindergarten at the start of the year. You want to continue to see the green grow, and the yellow shrink, and the red shrink. So, we see noticeable gains there in some of those areas. If you take a look at first grade, you'll see where there were some strong gains made from the middle, beginning of the year in fall to the winter. These students will test again at the end of the year in just a few weeks. And then lastly, we will see middle school reading. There's still a lot of work to be done there for reading, particularly in grades seven and eight. Similar chart for reading, or will you notice the gains from one year to the next, or the increases comparisons between our current year to our previous year? Lots of blues there, but there are some areas in gray that we know we still need to work on.
So, I just want to clarify that if you're looking at the kindergarten, the prior and the current, that is kindergartners last year versus a different group of kindergartners this year.
Correct.
Not kindergartners last year, and then first graders this year.
Correct.
Okay, just one. Thank you.
So, Mr. Perry, how you following those kids? I mean, they get the same foundation to start? How you see how much they progress as they, as they go through the school system?
So, there are multiple measures and multiple data points that we use to measure students. Of course, you have your M-class data that you can look at it from student to student over the years. And then we use, for example, in grades four and higher, we look at check-in data because we measure what students are being taught and measured or being tested or assessed. I don't hate to use the word tested, but being assessed on what they're learning throughout the course of a period with the check-in data. So, we do check-ins in reading, math, and science.
And just as a reminder, check-ins are?
Are state, they're from DPI. That's from the state, kind of measures what the stand, how standards are being taught, and what students have, have learned to the point for that check-in period. So, that's aligned to our standard course of study that's developed by DPI and delivered by them as well. Our principals have access to this data. Our teachers have access to this data. They can pull us down at any point, take a look. And they get a more narrow focus based on the students in their classroom.
Okay.
So, we're looking at this from a holistic point. All right, any additional questions? All right, I'm going to give way to Mr. Connor to share some information briefly about our AI Task Force.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just give you a very brief update on our AI work. We're working really hard to make sure that our teachers and our staff and our students understand all about artificial intelligence. That's a, you know, you hear that a lot. In the slide deck that was included in the board packet, there are a lot of slides, some that you can look at for, you know, really just for your information. I do want to say that we were able to do work this year with our AI Task Force because of a grant that we applied for and received. We were one of four schools in the state to receive a $50,000 emergent technology grant. We used that funding to be able to establish our task force, to be able to provide staff development to Saturday all-day sessions for 35 members, staff members throughout the district. We also plan to have a summer camp, June 10th through 12th, in this room, for up to 25 of our high school students, to be able to start working with them on really understanding how they can use AI productively and responsibly. We also were able to purchase some paid versions of AI to be able to see if it would be worth the investment if we use the paid version versus the free version. In the slide deck, you'll see all of our members. You will see the staff development dates that we have and have already participated in. You will see some of the paid AI platforms that we have, that we've evaluated so far. Our last AI meeting with our staff is this Wednesday. It's a virtual meeting. But I did want to bring to your attention some of the things that we have not done yet and plan to do between now and June. So, this Friday, we will be submitting a Digital Learning Initiative Impact Grant to DPI to continue our work. This is a three-year grant, $95,000 each year. However, there will only be six awarded in the state. So, it's very competitive, but we feel really good about our application. In April, we are creating Google Classroom online courses so that our staff can work on some of this online or on-demand. In May, we're going to start working on our, our summer camp. And then in June, we will have our summer camp, our AI camp. So, that's really where we are. I'm really hoping that we will receive the Impact Grant so we can continue this work from staff to students in high school, middle school, and elementary school. Are there any questions?
Mr. Connor, if I may, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this and all the extra hours you put in, the hard work going after these grants. We wouldn't have been able to do it without your, your work because this money isn't, isn't there locally, to be clear. And we have got to catch up with our students when it comes to AI. We, we are woefully behind. And I think you're doing a great job of preparing our teachers and getting, and getting our, our kids involved in how this is being used.
I'm, I'm really, thank you for saying that. And I'm really hoping that we'll be able to get the grant and continue our work. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Connor.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Here to update again our attendance and our behavior for the district. So from our month six, three months to go, our month six principal's monthly report, you can see that we're still not at our district goal, but we have improved since last month. Elementary was at 87.5%. Our middle school was at 88.3%. And high schools are at 78.4% for that month with an overall district attendance of 90.4. So our highest overall school with the best attendance was Wilton with 93.9. I kind of changed up the slide, y'all, from how I've done it in the past, put the highest over there. Then our secondary school with the highest, so it's not necessarily the second highest, but our secondary school with the highest is Northern Gramble Middle School with 91.4. I think that was their second month in a row. And then our most improved school, you can see, went up by 13.8 percentage points, and that was Gramble Central High School. All of our schools showed a significant, high schools showed a significant increase. Again, just a reminder, the previous month was when we had exams and students had excused absences if they had exempted exams, but they still count as absences. So we did see them returning to school for the next month. Next slide.
Ms. Rice, can I ask real quick?
Yes.
Our virtual learning days, did that impact our attendance, do you think?
Absolutely, it did. Yes, sir. So our virtual learning days, you know that students aren't marked present unless they turn back in their packets or their work. And so we gave them even extended days, but some just, you know, did not get that in in time enough by the deadline to mark those off. So it, you know, it had an impact as well. Our schools did a great job. They sent them home in paper pencils, students could log in online, it was just getting that in. So here's our overall attendance comparison. You can see that we're about where we were last year. Again, we've moved up from where we were the previous month. But this is the one area trending in the right direction that continues to be our teeter back and forth. I'll just be honest of getting our students to attend school regularly. And it's just, we need a lot of home support in that as well. I think our schools and our teachers are doing the best they can with the phone calls and information, but we need regular school attendance. Next slide. Behavior. So our total referrals for the month of February was 899. You can see the difference between the elementary, middle, and high. Our high school students have the fewest. In-school suspension was 361 and out-of-school suspension, we had 175 for a total of 536 suspensions. Those were the top offenses for that month, disruptive behavior, aggressive behavior, and then inappropriate behavior. And then just to summarize again, how this adds to our attendance, the days out of class, that they're still counted present if they're in school, but the days out of school for out-of-school suspension were 746 in that month. They are excused absences, but all those absences still go into our attendance when we're looking at overall attendance. Any questions? Do I have any more slides? I can't remember. I think that might be it.
I believe you had a trend slide next, yeah.
Up, discipline comparison. We are improving in this area. You can see that our highest was October. We have continued to improve compared to last year. And so we're always, you know, students are going to misbehave, that's what they do. And so this is just accountability that we do have some consequences. And we would like to see it go down as year to year as we have those standards in place. Now, are there any questions? I'll just put a shout-out for testing here. I know it's not a slide. Please reach out to your local schools that you represent and see if they need a proctor in May for testing. They would be most appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
That concludes our presentation for this afternoon. This evening, thank you.
Ms. Perry, thank you and to all your staff. You guys are doing an amazing job.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, board members. We're starting off this evening with our monthly budget amendments. The first is for our state funding. And this is to allocate new state funding that includes Drivred, our summer reading camp. That's one of the summer programs that was shared earlier. And additional funding for our exceptional children's program. And also some movement of funds to cover after-school tutoring and the book harvest program that's coming up. And this increased our state budget by $305,272. And our next budget amendment is in our local funds. And this is, there's no increase or decrease of funding. It's just adjusting funds to meet program needs. And those are attached to some of those areas, departments that requested these changes. Then in our capital outlay budget, we have an increase of $800. This was to allocate insurance proceeds from damage to the South Gramble sign. And the rest is just adjusting the budget to cover what was remaining of the activity bus purchase. And then finally, we have our other restricted fund or Fund Eight. And this is allocating additional recycling revenue of $715 and correcting a misplacement of, from the March budget amendment, just of $260. So just making that correction to our budget. Any questions about those budget amendments? They have come to you for approval.
Is motion for approval to the budget amendment?
I move that we approve the budget as presented by Ms. Hines.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Ross, talking about Mrs. LeBradd here, ready for question. I don't think so. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Aye, carry. Thank you for that.
Thank you, board members. Next item we have, we'll start with that budget review. And this is the budget review as of, this is all of our expenses as of February 28th. And at that point in the year, we're approximately 67% through the year. So that percentage to date column kind of gives you an idea of generally where we stand for the year. And as I've said before, we're, right now, in the local budget, we're exactly where we want to be because we want that percentage to be lower because we have that local supplement that's paid out at the end of the year. So we're where we want to be at this point. Our state budget, which is the most concerned, is right on track for spending for the end of the year. In general, I feel like we're in a good place for our spending. Do you have any questions about that budget review? Okay. All right, the next item we have as part of our monthly review is for board professional development. And it's easy-peasy this year, this month, because there were no changes. There were some charges for canceled workshops, so those will come right off. So the board still has just over $3,000 remaining for professional development in their budget this year. Thank you. And finally, just want to go over a, just an update on the budget development for this year. I want to go over, go to the next slide, please. Just review the budget process because it is a, it's a somewhat extended process. We started this process in January, really in December. And we did, just as a review, we did submit our county budget proposal in March after you approved that request last month. So at this point, we are in that ongoing budget development phase. We're still focusing on that zero-based budget work for the departments especially. And of course, we are working with HR as they review allotment projections and current staffing levels. What you don't see on here, but hot off the presses, we did receive our planning allotments late last week. They, we have a webinar to review and get some questions answered. So we're not going to be releasing those yet because there's still a lot of question marks that I have in my head. What I do want to share is that generally, they were what we expected. But the potential, because I'm trying to be cautious here, potentially, it looks like we have retained our low-wealth funding, which was tremendous, which means also we have retained that state supplemental funding. So I'm going to have that confirmed, just check, check, and double-check with our state DPI webinar tomorrow. But, and I'll inform the county because that was one of our expansion potential requests to supplement those funds. So it looks like we're in good stead with that. But I will bring that information finalized to the finance committee later in April. And just again, as a reminder, we have, we'll have our interim budget in place by June 30th. And then our final budget resolution will be when we receive our final funding from the state budget and our final funding from the county.
Could you remind everyone what the low-wealth supplement goes towards?
Oh, the state supplement that's based on low-wealth money, that is primarily to, that additional, well, that additional supplement, that two, that extra 2% that our classroom-based teachers receive. So they receive that, this year, they received that in December. They just received a little pocket in March, and they'll receive some additional funding at the end of the year. So we're excited about receiving that funding.
So we use it specifically to supplement teacher pay in Bramble County?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That is the only way we're allowed to use that funding, to be clear. So we were very excited to see that we were still eligible for that funding. All right, next slide, please. So just, again, just putting us all on the same page, the drivers for this year's budget, or next year's budget, is reducing our reliance on fund balance. And we're going to go into that a little bit deeper in just a minute. Recognizing the savings from consolidation because we've projected all these savings in the studies. But now we have to do the hard work of making sure that we actually recognize those savings in our budget. We recognize that we have a decreasing ADM that we have to budget for. And of course, we have increasing costs as everybody does. But we'll dig in a little bit deeper. Next slide, please. Focusing first on that fund balance. And I just, I need to say over and over again, if you remember correctly, we're using $4.1 million of our fund balance this year. I, we, you can call it our savings account, or rainy day fund, whatever you want to call it. It is important to know we are spending that much more this year than the funding we receive from our funders.
And what was that $4.1 million going towards primarily?
That $4.1 million, it's going to many different things. A lot of it is going towards the, goodness gracious, it's what we call the cliff before the cliff. I don't, we've talked about that many times. Because before all of the ESAR dollars came because of COVID, we were in a funding situation. We were in a budget crisis and we had additional positions that we were carrying. And that, if I remember correctly, it was about $1.5 million at that point, that just little, that little piece of it.
Ms. Hines, if I may?
Yes, of course.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth either, but I think, Ms. Hayes, directly kind of answer your question, it's primarily due to the inefficient operation
Oh.
of our school district. Yeah, having simply too many schools.
Yes.
And sustaining positions?
That are not supported by the state.
Okay.
Exactly. Exactly, thank you. So that's, again, $4.1 million. And notice that if we do use that $4.1 million this year, that only leaves us with $1.7 million in our fund balance, our savings. And that's a critical, critically low number. It does not make me feel safe for this institution. So we've been working on that $4.1 million. And that chart at the bottom, again, we go back to, these were the studies. These were the final figures from those studies that were presented with all the consolidation efforts. The high school consolidation estimate was $1.6 million. The middle school consolidation estimate was just over $1 million for a total of $2.6 million. Now, do some quick math. $4.1 million minus $2.6 million, we're still not there. And if you remember correctly, in previous discussions we've had, you know, we weren't happy with that $4.1 million at the beginning when we created this budget. So we continued to work to refine, to cut where we could. And we've already found about $1 million out of this year's budget. So we won't be digging as much into fund balance. So even if we add $1 million in savings to that $2.6 million, that's still short about $500,000. So that's still savings that we have to find, things that we have to cut in our budget. We still have work to do to make our budget balance.
Ms. Hines, I really appreciate you driving that point home. I think it's really important to remind everyone about that, that even despite the extremely difficult, challenging work of school consolidation in our secondary level, it doesn't get us there.
But we're going to keep working on it. And that's the work that we're going to be doing on the finance committee and in departments and at the school level, for sure. Next slide, please. Another driver we have is increasing costs. In our, in the creation of our county budget or our funding request, we had to, of course, make some assumptions about what the increases would be this year, for the next year. And we were projecting, based on some historical data, a 3% projection in salaries, increase in salaries, sorry, which is pretty standard. However, I think somebody mentioned HB 192 this morning, or earlier in this meeting, and which addresses pay, teacher pay, which is fantastic. But it would significantly increase that cost, which means we already haven't requested enough funding from the county if that does go through. So I just, I need you to have that in the back of your heads.
It would be a 22% increase.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
Yes. Health and retirement, both, health and retirement, we're still waiting for the state information from that. A 5% increase is pretty, is pretty standard, and that seems to be where we're heading. So I feel good about that. Utilities, you know, we estimated a 5% increase. Property insurance was a big surprise. Right before spring break, I met with our insurance carrier. We projected, I believe it was a 2% increase, and he said, nope. Insurance is looking at a 10% increase when we look at property insurance.
Ms. Hines, can you explain why, did he say why it went from 2 to 10?
A lot of it has to do with Helene, the devastation, because it's mostly property values. And, you know, apparently, the state, the county mentioned that Vance Grambles had the same information come from their insurance commissioners. So there's a lot that goes into it. But part of that is just the state of the natural disasters we've been having recently. And that's all I have. Do you guys have any other additional questions about where we are with budget?
Ms. Hines, can you give us just a brief reminder of where we are in the timeline? Insofar as, you know, the passing, passing the budget, providing information to the county commissioners and so forth?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Can you go back to, I believe it was that first slide, Ernie? Yep, there you go. So again, we're in that ongoing budget development. We've already presented what we've, you know, our request to the county. And we've had our meetings regarding that. And at this point, it's in their court. They have, typically, typically, they approve their budget between May and June. So typically, we know something about our local funding by June. we know something about our local funding by June. And of course, the state, it's the beginning, it's the, it's the beginning of the biennium, so hopefully we will have information about the state budget sooner rather than later. However, so we have to be cautious working with that, even though we have planning allotments that we can start creating our budget from, we know that those planning allotments could change significantly based on what happens with the state budget. So anything that we put into place before the passing of the state budget is, is temporary, and could be changed at any moment. So I think it's, it's important to keep all of that in mind. And that's why we tend to wait to have that budget, you know, later in the fall, after the school year. Did that answer your question?
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm trying to remember, last time the state had to pass a budget in the biennium, wasn't it, it was very late, correct? Like October, maybe?
Yes. It was actually, is that the year that it was later? Because there was a year we, it was January.
Was it really?
Yes. Yeah. And that was pretty recent. That may have been the beginning of the biennium.
Yep.
Yeah. Last year was early. I'm going to be optimistic.
But board members, just another piece of information, we'll be having our meeting with our liaisons this Thursday, and I'm sure this will be, you know, one of the items that we discuss. And then, of course, there is a work session that's planned on June 23rd to help Ms. Hines kind of close this year out and get as many of the amendments cleared as possible prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you as well, Ms. Hines, for that report. Now, health and safety, operational facility, this Mr. Currie and Dr. Currie?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So start with our operations update, and we're going to look at the facility side of the consolidation process. So, yeah, that first slide. We, we had, go back one. So we had our initial planning meetings in December, and then in January hired our project manager and started the contracting process. And then in March, we kind of started the materials boxing process. So now we are still in the contracting process and preparing our schools, our buildings for the move that's coming. And then you can kind of see through the rest of the timeline where we anticipate the majority of this to happen will be in June, because students won't be in school, everything should be packed up, and we should be ready to move and be completely done at the end of June. That is the goal. Next slide, please. There are four separate moves, so Granville Central, Buttonorestam Middle, Granville Central, nope, Holly Middle School, and Buttonorestam Elementary School are all different moves, because they each have to go from one building to the next building. And so the, the most complex move is that Granville Central move, because items from Granville Central are going to multiple locations. The same is going to happen at Buttonorestam Middle and G C Holly as well, but they won't have as many items that are going to multiple locations. And that really comes from the C T E programs that are at those schools. And so with them being redistributed out to the other high schools, there are large items that will be transferred to those schools. Bus routes for next year are finished. They are as finished as they can be, based on the information we have right now. So Dr. Hamm and his team, Ms. Renee Gooch, have done an excellent job getting that information out and ready. Again, it'll change a little bit, we know that, based on the students who actually ride the bus, but we are as set as we can be for next year, for that process. And then we are in the ongoing work with fencing at Buttonorestam Middle School, so that it can be prepared to be an elementary school, that, you know, quotes have been gotten, and everything has started with that, so that process is starting. The windows are being replaced at the middle school in the pre-K classroom, and so that will be ready, as well as the items being lowered, so it'll be at the right size for the students. We are still in the inventorying process with all of our items from our academic team, from, you know, child nutrition, technology department, all of those areas. I'm going to do a big shout out to, many of the operations teams worked over spring break, and a lot of what they worked on was this, and so we're very grateful for them. And they asked to do it, they, they wanted to. So I know Mr. Connor and his team are in here, so I'll give them a big shout out, because they worked throughout that break. We are continuing in the contract process, we're really excited to add that next item tonight for the move contract, so that we can hire a mover, and that is a big first step in that process. But we, we'll still have additional walkthroughs as we go through packing up items, as we go through the actual moves, we will continue walkthroughs, and by we, I mean, Bill Graham and I will continue walking through the buildings to make sure that everything that needs to be moved has been moved. We are not going to leave large amounts of materials in all of the buildings, we are going to clean them out. The days of pack ratness are over, and so we are going to get rid of items that no longer are needed, and we are working on getting dumpsters already. There are schools such as South Granville and Buttonorestam Middle, who have already started the process at J F Webb High School, of getting rid of items that they don't need anymore. And so we're, we're grateful that they're already starting that work, it'll make it easier when the moves come. Playground determinations are still in process, we are, we are pretty set that we're going to have to get a new playground for Buttonorestam Elementary School, because we just don't think the move is going to be possible with some of the playgrounds. So expect to hear more from that soon. And then again, just that disposal, we're getting rid of items, surplus items, technology department has some recycling companies coming and getting rid of the mass number of recyclable items that we have. Those will actually end up generating some revenue for the technology department, so we're excited about that. And we do have some other surplus items, such as the freezer at Buttonorestam Elementary that you all passed tonight, that we'll be able to get some funding for that, too, that can help with this process. And then, safety updates, again, want to thank Mr. Keith King, who is here, for all of his work with safety around the consolidation. He has done a massive amount of work of going to each building, looking at their camera systems, looking at their networks, to make sure that they can hold the cameras that we need to get, making sure that we have enough of the metal detectors at each school, and it seems to be going pretty well. What do you say, Mr. King? Yes, I think it's going pretty well so far. We'll actually have some surplus items that we'll be able to use for special events, such as the metal detectors. We'll have a couple extras that we'll be able to kind of move around as those metal detectors wear out in other places, so that's really positive. All right, next slide, please. I did want to add one more. It is not, this is not a done deal, so please do not put this in stone, but we are very hopeful that we will be able to repave, upgrade the parking lot at South Granville before the school year starts next year. There will be one section by the ag shop that we will not be able to, we already know, we won't be able to do anything there, but that's because of the work that's going to be done on the weight room. And so we, the heavy equipment would just damage what we just did, so we're trying to be very strategic and thoughtful on that. But we are very hopeful that we'll be able to, to get that parking lot done before students come. So any questions about the operations side for me?
We're going to trash all those things Dr. Currie said that were no good for the high schools at South and Webb, this is trash again. We have a big yard sales, somebody found some of their treasures being out, you know?
Do you know, we actually talked about yard sales in some of our, our meetings. Our, our real issue is looking at, some of the items just aren't even usable anymore. You know, it is broken desks that we have had kind of sitting in an empty classroom, so we could pull parts from it if we needed to, and now there's no more parts to pull. You know, things like that. Books that are ripped apart that have just been stuck in somebody's closet.
All right. All right. Let's talk about that.
Yes, we have talked about it, though.
Thank you.
I think we said, I called it a child nutrition yard sale. Okay. All right, well, I will move on to the contract. There is a copy of this contract in all of your folders, so that you can look at this. There were five different companies that Mr. Graham worked with, only four of them actually came out, did any walkthroughs, and provided quotes for us. And we got this late last Friday, because during spring break, Mr. Graham went through the building with one more company, so that they could walk through every campus and make sure they had a clear picture of what would be required in the move. So two companies had extremely low bids, but they did not at all come close to doing what we needed them to do. They highly underestimated the four moves, and it was more like one move, and so we kind of discarded those two. Then there's this quote that we got, and there was another one that was about $100,000 more than this quote. And while we felt like that would be a company that would provide good service, it was not very cost-effective for us. And so you can see in this, the quote for Armstrong Company, which by the way, is the company that we used in the Holly move as well, so they are, you know, we're familiar with our school system, but it is 176,843, which for four moves, with some of the equipment that they'll be moving, is a very reasonable amount. Does anybody have any questions about this contract, or?
The only question that I have is that, the very first part of this paragraph, it talks, it says the relocation of five schools to various locations, instead of four.
If you look at it, they're considering Buttonorestam Middle and Buttonorestam Elementary on here, so I think he lists five schools, Granville Central High to South Granville High School. Because remember, Granville Central is going to two different places, because some of those items are going to Webb, and some of those items are going to South Granville.
Thank you.
And the recommendation, of course, is that this is passed as presented, pending attorney review?
That's right. Because this just came in, we haven't had an opportunity to put it through attorney review, so the request would be that the motion be to approve it pending final language by the attorney, or final review of the language by the board's attorney.
Any motion for that now?
Motion to approve is presented with attorney approval.
Okay. Second, it's a motion by Ms. LeBrett and second by Ms. Baker, that we approve this grant after review by our attorney. Ready for questions? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Ms. Chair, if I may, I just want to thank Dr. Curran, I want to thank Bill Graham for their hard work, keeping us on timeline. We are, we are sticking to it, and despite all of the difficulties and challenges, and keeping in mind, this is in addition to the regular work of the school year. So I just want to thank both of them, and everyone else, from all the operations department who's chipped in, really, maintenance, transportation, child nutrition, they've all been, been at the table for these conversations, and it's gone quite smoothly so far. So, thank you for your, your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll stay up here for the school consolidation staffing update. So this is very similar to the update that I have provided at all the other meetings. Let's get that first slide. So just where are we as of today? The custodians were reassigned December 10th through 12th, clerical, January 14th, C T E teachers, January 14th, E C staff was January 21st, teachers assistants were the 23rd, instructional support staff 28th, child nutrition 28th, and then elective and core teachers were split into two different groups, and that was really based off of the student reassignment timeline, and when we got information about how many students would be at each school, so February 27th and March 6th. We still have 11 staff members to reassign. I am very happy to be able to report that we have, right now, as of today, one classified staff member who has not been reassigned, every other classified staff member has been, and that person will probably be reassigned tomorrow. So that has been really a positive, and we still have multiple certified staff members who are displaced that we are looking for positions. Our athletic director and head coach process has started, athletic director interviews have been completed, and we actually are bringing four of those tonight, because there will be four schools, and so all four of them will be coming tonight. There are a couple of head coach recommendations already coming tonight as well, but that process, or that interview process is happening right now.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
May I ask a point of clarification? We give the definition of what a displaced staff member is and what it is not?
Yes, so a displaced staff member is someone who currently does not have a position assigned to them for the 25, 26 school year. For those staff members, we are still very hopeful that through natural attrition, which is retirements, resignations from people leaving the district, that we will be able to place them in positions for next year. So they're, so our staff members, and we are still working to be able to place them for next year.
So none of these individuals have been recommended for termination, non-renewal, any of that, right?
No, they have not.
And they are aware of the terminology that you are using displaced? They understand the terminology that you're using?
Yes, we, the notifications that we have sent have told them that they not currently have an assignment for next year, and that as that changes, we will update them.
So currently, we're how many months out from the beginning of the school year?
Quite a few. Yes, usually we see most of our retirements and resignations start to come in after spring break, so we would anticipate that we will have some coming in the next few weeks. We already have a couple of retirements that we know are on the horizon, and they just haven't turned in their paperwork to us, so of course, until they do that, we can't treat those positions as if they are, are open, we have to wait until we have that information to move forward. Next slide, please. So just a reminder of the staff reassignment timeline, you can see we have completed a large amount of this timeline, and now we are in the final stages of hiring for positions that we don't have people who are currently qualified to hold. For example, we have a Spanish teacher position open at one of our schools, but we don't have anybody who is displaced who is qualified to teach Spanish. And so, you know, we are going to be hiring for that position. And then adjustments as we do get those resignations and retirements, that we can put some of our staff members in those positions. All right, next slide, please. Just a reminder of the reassignment factors, and this is, again, something that we've shared at every meeting, evaluation data, attendance, documented disciplinary issues, degrees and certifications and licenses, areas of licensure for certified staff members, program enrollment, C T E and electives, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Length of service both in Granville County and in North Carolina, extrajudy positions they hold, our ability to fill the position, we'll also talk about that in the next slide. And then position needs, and that was where the biggest work came in, was the position needs, as we looked at consolidating the schools and determining how many core teachers they would need, how many elective teachers they would need, what offerings they would need to be able to provide, so that, you know, made a big impact on how we staffed those schools. And it was all, of course, based on what students will need to be able to prepare for whatever the next level is. So, you know, middle school, it's what do they need to prepare for high school, and high school, it's what do they need to graduate to either go into the military, be employed, or be enrolled in a two-year or four-year university. Okay. And then employee intent form responses, we did gather those, they were not a deciding factor in any of the decision-making, but we did try to take those into account when we made decisions. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to go through their reassignment process, now that we have finished it, to kind of go through each kind of month, almost, that we, we went through this process and what happened. So we started with the rubric spreadsheet for each employee at the impacted school, and those rubrics were created using our board policy and state statute that goes along with that. In April of 2024, when we were afraid last year that we would have to kind of go through a RIF process, we started the rubric process. And so that was developed in the H R Innovation Committee in April of 2024, and then was presented to the board on April 15th of 2024. And then we revisited that as a board this year on January 6th, when our new members started, so they could see what that rubric process looked like. And then we decided to use the first observation in N E C S for all of our certified staff members, because that was the evaluation that every person had at that point. Not everyone had, you know, historical data or anything that would, would tell us more information, and so we wanted to be fair to everyone, and that's why we use that data. We also eliminated the program enrollment and ability to fill areas, because we, one, did not think it was fair to have program enrollment held, you know, for or against someone when schools don't offer the same programs. And so one program at one school not being offered at another school, that really wasn't an equitable measure. And then the ability to fill areas, we all know in education, it's hard to fill every position. position. And so, um, we did not count that for anybody. And then in December, um, the human resources team met with maintenance and transportation directors and we met with the principal of each impacted school. Um, during that process, we got information for the rubrics that we could not find in someone's personnel file or, um, in N E C S, which is our system that is the evaluation system. And so we got data from, from them so that we would have accurate information as much as possible through this process. We also, um, at that time with maintenance and transportation, made sure we knew who had bus licenses, where our custodial needs would be once we, um, consolidated schools, what our bus needs would be once we consolidated schools, which was a huge lift, um, for Dr. Hamm. And, um, all of those decisions were made, every decision in this process was made in a team fashion. Not one person made any of these decisions. They were all made, um, in, in group meetings based on who would be most relevant during that time. So in January, we met with the district, um, S I S coordinator, which is our student information system coordinator, which is our, um, data manager for the district. And then the chief finance officer, director of transportation, director of H R, director of E C, child nutrition director, and got their input in the process as well, um, for staffing in their departments. And, um, for, you know, with finance, it was the bookkeepers at the schools, even though that's not their department. It still had a huge impact on, on that work. So, um, and then in February, we met with the federal programs director and, um, again, the district S I S coordinator. That was really to nail down the number of kids we were gonna have at each school because that impacts how many teachers we have at each school and how many other staff members. Um, so we went through that process and then our executive team, our director of H R reviewed all of the final placements that we had at that time and made sure that, you know, we had followed the process exactly as we had laid out the entire time. And then again, in March, um, met with the executive team, their director of H R, um, district athletic directors and all of the impacted principals. And at that meeting, which happened to be the leadership meeting, um, last March, um, we met with all of them to make decisions about how we would move forward with the athletic process. Um, and so, uh, that is where the, um, application process came from. That is where the, um, panel information came from to make sure all the panels had representatives from both schools, um, multiple principals. So not one school got favored in any of the interviews and then move forward with that process. We also made sure that we communicated this with all of our staff members. So the first, um, communications went out after, of course, the decision was made by the board, which was November fourth. Um, in our Friday memo, we communicated November, um, fifth as well. We sent the timeline out November fifteenth. On November twenty-second, we sent the timeline and the rubrics to everyone. And then December sixth, thirteenth, January tenth, February seventh, February twenty-eighth, March fourth and March seventh, we gave updates to the entire staff through that Friday morning memo. Uh, we did have some in-person meetings. Uh, Dr. Winborn offered in-person meetings to every impacted school and a couple of them took him up on that. And so we did have some in-person meetings to talk about the process and, and, um, the rubric and answer any questions they had about that. And then all of our leadership meetings, we discussed this with our principals. Um, our principals who weren't impacted also got the same update so that everybody in the, in the county, in our district had the same information. And then as needed, we met with those principals individually. Um, they got additional information December fourth, sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, and every week in January, um, February twenty-sixth and March seventh. And then, um, we communicated the decision that we made, um, in March at the leadership meeting to coaches right after that. So they got that information on March fifth. And then, of course, we communicated with the board throughout that whole time too. So some of you were not here when that first started, um, so we just wanna kind of update you on that. Um, emails went out December sixth, seventeen-thirtieth and June twenty-fifth. That was all in twenty twenty-four. Um, so, you know, we, we've started this process early so that we would have information out to everyone. And then H R Innovation, um, in March fifth of twenty twenty-four, we actually started this conversation because that was when we were afraid we were gonna have RIFs last year. Um, of course, April twelfth, we developed those rubrics. And then September eighteenth, we started again having a conversation this year of, because of the possible consolidation and what that might look like. Um, and that has gone through every H R Innovation Committee that we've had so far. And then, of course, board meetings, again, April fifteenth last year was the first time we presented these rubrics. Um, and then from September ninth through today, we have also presented updates for every meeting, um, to, to make sure everybody understood where we were in the process and what was coming next.
Dr. Curran, if I may, I wanna thank you for such a detailed account of this process. And I wanna take this opportunity, especially since the media is here, um, to respond to the allegations that were made against me and our staff earlier about this process not being transparent when in fact, it has been extremely transparent, as you have just laid out, as you have just laid out very, very clearly. And it's well documented. Anyone can go and see it. Um, we've had open invitation to every employee to discuss these matters. Personal visits to schools by me. Frequent clear communication to all staff on many, many occasions. So to say it's transparent is utterly false. Fairness, this rubric was based in policy and it was approved by this Board of Education and the previous members of the board that were on the team last spring. And it clearly correlates. It, none of it was invented by me or any members of our staff. It is derived specifically from policy. Those are the criteria that are being used in this rubric. In addition, in addition, Madam Chair.
All right, guys, please, uh, let this go, please. Go ahead, please, Dr. Winborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Equal treatment is extremely important and this speaks to fairness. No single individual, myself or any member of the H R department, have assigned any values on our own to any employees at any time. This has been done by multiple people with frequent reviews. And when errors have been made, we have corrected them. Madam Chair.
Guys, order in this meeting, please.
Again, all of these are publicly available for anyone to review. So Madam Chair, I just, I just.
Please, members of the audience, please allow Dr. Winborn to make his statements.
So, Madam Chair, I just felt the need to try to establish some facts, um, in, in light of the false allegations that have been made here tonight. So, and I wanna thank Dr. Curran for her hard work and dedication and integrity during this process. I think it has been outstanding and, um, I think our board members, you know, definitely owe her a debt of gratitude for her work in this area. It's been very challenging.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions?
No, we don't have a question at the current time, not from any board member. Any questions, comments to the board?
Um, we, we talked about this previously. I just wanted to make sure, um, we were talking about the, uh, the athletic directors and I know you said that four of those are coming tonight. And then the head coaches have already, that's already in process. Um, and I know that you said specifically to start with fall coaches because obviously those are the teams that are gonna have to get in their summer workouts first, um, and then, and then go on to everybody else. Um, I wanna make sure that at the new schools, um, you know, Granville Central and then also the, the two high, the two remaining traditional high schools, uh, that it's on the radar for that, those A Ds and head coaches to go ahead and start preparing for, you know, the new students and the new, um, influx of student athletes that we're gonna have. Cause I know we're gonna need additional uniforms and additional equipment and all of that stuff.
Yes, and our, our current A Ds have actually already been working through that process and the principals with, um, Mike Carroll as the district A D. Um, they have already done inventories of every, you know, helmet, every pom-pom, every thing that we have at all those schools and are looking at what are we going to need for next year. Um, for football, we've looked at what would be the most efficient way to get helmets refurbished and repainted, um, where we need to move any, if they need to go to the other high schools. Um, so we, we are already in the process of doing all of that.
Okay, thank you.
What members, more comments?
I make a motion that we, uh, move into closed session after a ten-minute break.
So make a motion move to closed session, second by Ms. Baker here. All a question, please, aye? All opposed? We move to closed session. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the information that we heard in closed session.
Motion to approve certified and classified personnel as presented in closed session.
Second.
It's been motioned by Danielle Hayes and second by Russell and LeBrett. I refer questions, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. All right, down here now to open session, approve of that. Upcoming events announcements. April eighteenth, Good Friday holiday. April twenty-fifth, the B O Finance Committee meeting at two o'clock. And May fifth, a regular meeting, Mayor Park Center for Innovative Learning. So one thing's gotta go next week, right? That should be, we got me and this week. Thursday. So y'all make sure y'all on your calendars, please. Thursday will be what, the tenth? The tenth?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Okay.
That's what, I'm sorry.
The tenth.
That's just for you and the vice chair.
Okay. Okay. Me and Chair, okay. Well, board members, let me say that I think we have experienced what, um, very early in our, those who just starting this, Black, I am. We have experienced a great bit, I guess, of, um, controversy. Things that say about us is not true. So we guys really, really look beyond that and keep our eyes on the process, trying to educate our kids here. Give them their best education possible in the best condition here, cause we all know we are faced now with low enrollment here. We know what that ends up being. Just work real hard and try to keep our, keep our comments very short in the public here. Say very little on Facebook, say very little face-to-face. And when they tell you you are a liar face-to-face, say, no, I'm not. I work Granville County Schools and I'm here to make all our kids the best that they can be. Thank you so much for the night here. Have a safe travel home. I'll see you, uh, next month.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I can't get loud. You gotta practice on that.
All, all in favor?
We've been working on that.
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Safe travel home, guys. Thank you for all you do for our kids.